Eighth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting for the city of Summersworth to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Peppin.
Yeah.
Vincent?
Excused.
Gibson?
Excused.
Cotton Zaro, sorry, Parity Cotton Zaro.
Here.
Yeah.
Witham?
Excused.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Messier?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Here.
Councillor Peppin will lead the council in the. All right, next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indakina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waters, waterways, living beings, and the Alnaback, the people who have stewarded Indanica, excuse me, Indakina throughout the generations. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, which is any scheduled public hearings. I will open the public hearing on ordinance seven dash twenty-four, which is to amend chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section Three, Traffic Control. Ordinance seven dash twenty-four is regarding the time-limited parking on the westerly side of Main Street to Spring Street from two hours to all-day parking, as well as changing parking on Lord's Court from prohibited to seasonal, which would allow parking during the winter, the warm seasons, and prohibit parking from November fifteenth to April fifteenth. Is there anyone here to speak about ordinance seven dash twenty-four? Again, anyone here to speak about ordinance seven dash twenty-four? Yes, welcome, Councillor Gibson. All right, seeing as there is no one here to speak about ordinance seven dash twenty-four, I will close the public hearing on ordinance seven dash twenty-four. This will bring us to agenda item number five, which is comments by visitors. The Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, city council members, or the city manager or department heads. Is there anyone who would wish to speak tonight? All right, thank you. If you would state your name and the ward you live in. Check that there's a green button on. There you go. Cool.
Jack Gage, Four Royal Drive, Unit three oh four, Thomas Apartments by the Market Basket. I'm a renter here in Summersworth. Those of us who are renters, I'm sure you probably all know about the situation with housing and how rent is continually increasing. I've spoken to some of you about this issue. And, you know, my interesting situation with me, last year my rent actually went down because there were vacancies, but it's about to go up again, a pretty good amount this year. And just, housing is an important situation here in Summersworth, and I'm looking forward to hearing about the new plans for, to tackle the housing crisis here in our city. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right, anybody else? I hear some shoes in the hallway, so I'm gonna wait and just make sure this person doesn't want to speak. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight? All right, with that, we are going to move on to agenda item number six. Agenda item number six is the approval of the consent calendar. The chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? I see a motion being made by Councillor Cameron. All right, Councillor Cameron moves that the consent calendar be approved as presented at a second from Councillor Gibson. Question before the council is the adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, say no. All right, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it?
I just wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
I wasn't here at that one, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. An abstention.
The same for me.
And another abstention, two abstentions. The ayes appear to have it, so the consent calendar is adopted with two abstentions. Thank you. All right, that moves us to agenda item seven, which is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments this evening by sitting councillors? All right, I don't see any, so that will move us to agenda item eight, which is communications. Under communications this evening, we have a letter from the mayor to the city council and the school board chair regarding the Ward Five School Board vacancy. So I will read the letter. So January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Dear Councillors and School Board Chair, During the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three Summersworth municipal election, the school board Ward Five elected position resulted in a tie within the write-in votes to which Mary Ann Davis's name was polled during a lot per New Hampshire RSA six-six-nine colon thirty-six, held by the city clerk on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. On December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the office of the city clerk received a letter from Mary Ann Davis stating that Ms. Davis is unable to fulfill the position of the Ward Five School Board. A copy of her email is attached to this letter. For election races determined by write-in votes, if the person who receives the most votes for an office declines to take the oath of office and assumes then said office, a vacancy is created, again, per RSA six-six-nine colon twelve and RSA six-five-two colon twelve. Per the Summersworth City Council Rules and Regulations, Section ten A, Voting on Council or School Board Vacancies, please accept this letter as notice that the school board Ward Five position is vacant. In accordance with the city charter, the vacancy will be posted within City Hall for fourteen days and advertised in a local newspaper three times. Regards, Mayor Matt Gerding. Thank you. All right, seeing as there are no other communications, we'll move on to agenda item nine, which is Presentations of Petitions and Disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. What a mouthful. Seeing as we have none, that will move us to agenda item number ten, which is the mayor's report. All right, esteemed colleagues and members of the council, I'm so honored to sit with you tonight in this new role as mayor. Thank you again for your support. Thank you to the community for your support and faith in me by electing me, and I promise to make decisions for this community by putting community first. I aim to be collaborative, positive, solution-oriented, and as kind as possible. I value transparency, patience, communication, and kindness as well, and hope that the same can be awarded to me and my fellow elected officials who sit with me tonight. Congratulations are also in order to all these city councillors here tonight. Congratulations to all of you, as well as to the school board members. Again, congrats on all the positions. I wish you all a successful and positive term serving. Tonight's mayor's report will include a number of important informational and housekeeping items, so please bear with me through this extensive report. I apologize in advance. First up, I would like to announce that my normal office hours are scheduled here at City Hall for Mondays and Wednesdays from four PM to six PM. I do need to make a slight amendment, which is that for the month of January, I am the chaperone to the Summersworth Middle School and High School Ski Club, and we go skiing on Wednesdays, so I will be moving my normal Wednesday office hours to Thursday from six to four for just the month of January, just an FYI. This new year also marks the city's annual tradition of declaring January Diversity Month for the city. This is a yearly affirmation by the city that we support diversity, inclusion, and equity within the borders of the city. It reminds us, as we start each new year, the values that we hold dearest are those that promote acceptance, tolerance, and the differences that make us each unique. I'm honored to sit before you, having adopted this previously as a city councillor, and I am now hopeful, as your new mayor, that you will adopt it once again. Seeing as there's never been problems before, I anticipate that will go through positively. I hope so. But this proclamation is before us tonight as Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-four, and it is my recommendation that council suspend rules in order to have a second reading tonight on Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-four, so that it can go through at the earliest possible time within the month of January. And I believe the city manager will also be speaking to that in his report. I'm also excited to announce a new initiative out of the mayor's office called the Mayor's Quarterly Art Show. Four times throughout the year, the mayor's office will display new artwork submitted by residents of Summersworth in order to showcase our culture, the talents, and creativity of our diverse community. Artwork can be any medium, any size, honestly, as long as it fits comfortably within the mayor's office, that would work. So again, statues, paintings, drawings, all are welcome. Please consider submitting your work for consideration, excuse me. The deadline for submissions for the year of two thousand twenty-four will be March first of this year, so please submit a picture of your artwork to my email address, which is mgerding@summersworthnh.gov. Include the name of the artist, the size of the work, the medium, and a description of the work, please. Submitted artworks will be judged and chosen by the Mayor's Commission for Arts and Culture, and the first round of work will go on display in the office starting April first through June thirtieth. And then the next quarter, we'll have a new round, and the quarter after that, we'll have a new round. So please submit to that if you're interested. I know we have a ton of artists in this community that would absolutely be worthy of hanging in the mayor's office. I can't wait to see what we get. Tonight, I also have a number of committee appointments to confer. So first up, as you will soon see under agenda item, I can't remember the number, but it's nominations, appointments, and elections, I do have two appointments being brought forward this evening and placed in a nomination status. Both Matt Kaiser for appointment to Ward One Selectman with a term to expire December two thousand twenty-five, as well as Michael Turgeon for appointment as Ward Two Supervisor of the checklist for a term to expire January two thousand twenty-nine. Also found under nomination, appointments, and elections, the following will be brought forward this evening before the city council for a confirmation vote. I'll be looking to confirm David A. Witham for position of Deputy Mayor, Paul Goodwin for City Council Representative to the Historic District Commission, David A. Witham for City Council Representative to the Planning Board, and Kenneth Vincent for City Council Alternate Representative to the Planning Board. I would also like to announce the city councillor appointments for the council standing committees tonight. So first up, we have the Public Safety Committee. Our chair will be Marty Peppin, vice chair will be Ken Vincent, and then we'll have Dennis Messier and Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero, I hope I said that right, thank you, perfect, as another member, that's gonna be in there now. I just had to do it once. Next up would be our Recreation Committee. We'll have Chair Nancy Cameron, Vice Chair Richard Mishu, Members Bob Gibson and Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero. Next up is Public Works and the Environment Committee. Nominated Dave Witham as chair, Ken Vincent as vice chair, and Marty Peppin and Dennis Messier as members. The Finance Committee will have David Witham as chair, Dennis Messier as vice chair, Marty Peppin and Ken Vincent as members. Economic Development Committee will have Paul Goodwin as chair, Rick Mishu as vice chair, Bob Gibson and Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero as members. And lastly, Government Operations Committee will have Rick Mishu as chair, Bob Gibson as vice chair, and Paul Goodwin and Nancy Cameron as members. I would also like to announce mayoral appointments to already established commissions and committees that do not require a vote of council. The following are submitted for those. Marty Peppin as council representative to the E nine-one-one Street Name and Address Commission, Ken Vincent to the Sewer Appeals Commission, Rick Mishu to the Sewer Appeals Commission, Marty Peppin to the Sewer Appeals Commission, Paul Goodwin as Chair of the Eyes on Thirty Commission, Nancy Cameron as Member of Eyes on Thirty Commission, Deena Gagnon as Business Owner Representative to the Eyes on Thirty Commission, Jenny Holmes as Community Member Representative on the Eyes on Thirty Commission, Dennis Messier as Chair of the Joint Commission of City Council and School Board, Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero as Member of the Joint Commission of City Council and School Board, Beth Poole and as Chair of the Christmas Parade Committee, Nancy Cameron as Council Representative of the Christmas Parade Committee, Chris Smith as Member of the Christmas Parade Committee, Cody Donahue as Member of the Christmas Parade Committee, Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero as the Council Representative to the Hilltop Mental Health and Wellness Committee, Dennis Messier as the Council Representative to the School Board, Dennis Messier as Council Representative to the Lamprey Regional Board of Directors, Robert Gibson as Council Representative to Coastbus Coalition, Nancy Cameron as Chair of the Mayor's Commission on Arts and Culture, Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero as Vice Chair of the Mayor's Commission on Arts and Culture, Paul Goodwin as Member of the Mayor's Commission of Arts and Culture. I would also like to announce the formation of a number of new mayoral commissions and the appointments they're for. First, I would like to announce the formation of the Mayor's Housing Task Force. This mayoral commission will work to examine a variety of ways that Summersworth can change its ordinances and regulations to incentivize smart housing solutions that match the needs of our community, positively partner the city with developers, bolster economic growth within the city, and work to develop solutions that can lower the cost of living for working families here in Summersworth. It will work to inform the mayor of possible recommendations, coordinate with city staff, county officials, and regional housing experts, and make suggestions to the planning board as they begin developing their new master plan. The task force will include the following members: the mayor or their designee, Councillor Paul Goodwin, Councillor David Witham, a member of the Summersworth Housing Authority as chosen by their executive director, a member from Seacoast Workforce Housing as chosen by their executive director, a member of the zoning boards of adjustments as appointed by the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustments, a member of the Planning Board as appointed by the Chair of the Planning Board, a member of the Historic District Commission as appointed by the Chair of the Historic District Commission, Citizen Representative Elizabeth Nguyen, and Citizen Representative Kenneth Ferrer. I would also like to announce the creation of the Community Outreach and Communication Committee. This committee will work to find new ways to facilitate increasing communication between City Hall and the residents of Summersworth, and inform the mayor on these possible solutions. Improved communication between residents, elected officials like ourselves, and city staff can help folks be better informed, more engaged in our community, and then understanding of decisions that are being made within local government. Our committee will include the following members: Councillor Crystal Parity-Cotton Zero as Chair, Councillor Paul Goodwin as Vice Chair, and Councillor Bob Gibson as Member. I will also be forming the Youth Advisory Committee. This committee comes about thanks to tireless efforts and advocacy of a number of students at Summersworth High School who directly contacted me looking to be more involved in our community. This committee, composed of three student representatives, educators, and representatives from City Hall and School Board, they will work to engage young residents and local government and provide an avenue for direct action on student, youth, and family-related projects. Committee will include the following members: Councillor Nancy Cameron as chair, a member from the school board as appointed by the Chair of the school board, teachers Scott Sealy and M. Louise White, who will serve as teacher advisors, and students Talia Puckren, Ari Carter, and Chaplain Kasool. And lastly, I have one more, and then I promise you I am done. I will be forming a Historic District Advisory Committee. The creation of this committee was jointly requested by members of the Summersworth City Council and Historic District Commission in order to address concerns raised during a recent, recently-held joint meeting of the HCC and the Economic Development Committee. The Historic District Advisory Committee will work to identify solutions that will allow for the ease of development and growth within our downtown while maintaining Summersworth's historic character and charm, and will advise the mayor on possible solutions such as changes to form-based codes and zoning ordinances, changes to the standards of review for the HCC, and ways to clarify procedures for processing new development and infill within Summersworth's historic district. Also, potential needs for new historic surveys on Summersworth properties, et cetera. The committee will include the following members: City Councillor Rick Mishu, City Councillor Robert Gibson, City Councillor Paul Goodwin, Chair of the Historic District Commission Laura Barry, Member of the Historic District Commission Richard Brooks, and Member of the Historic District Commission Tim Tebier. And so it is with great excitement that I announce this very extensive list of appointments, and I honestly cannot wait to see the great things and all the great work that will come out of these various committees, commissions, and task force that we formed tonight. So thank you, Summersworth. With gratitude, I respectfully conclude my first mayor's report of my whole tenure as mayor for January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. I guess I gotta keep talking now. I was like, ready to close that. So that will move us to agenda item eleven, which is Reports of Standing Committees. I can actually take a break from talking. Finance Committee is up first. Councillor Witham is not here. Does our former vice chair have a report from Finance? Who is our former vice chair? I'll take that as no report. I don't believe they've met since, anyway, so. Next is Government Operations Committee. Councillor Mishu?
And no report this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Economic Development Committee. Councillor Goodwin?
No report.
Thank you. Next up is Public Safety Committee. Councillor Peppin?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Public Works and the Environment Committee. Councillor Witham is absent tonight. Is our vice chair in attendance? Great, hearing there's no meeting, so no report as well. And last up, Recreation Chair? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to agenda item twelve, which is Reports of Special Committees. Are there any reports of special committees this evening? All right, seeing as there are none, I will turn it over to the city manager, who will deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I offer the following comments that were included in the meeting packet for this evening. Ordinance seven dash twenty-four regarding traffic control. Again, this is recommended by the Traffic and Safety Committee. This two-hour parking was put into place when General Electra was active, therefore the two-hour limit doesn't seem to be needed anymore. The other change was in regards to Lord's Court will allow residents along the road to park there during months when snow plowing doesn't occur. Presently, there was no parking allowed for the entire twelve months each year on Lord's Court. Under Resolution twenty-eight twenty-four, Diversity Month, again, as the mayor mentioned, council should consider waiving council rules to act on this resolution this evening. And the next resolution, twenty-nine twenty-four, is in regards to authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire State Library and to accept a Moose Plate Grant Award for Vital Record Preservation. I provided you a copy of the grant agreement, or at least portions of it, for this vital record project. The city will conduct preservation treatment, microfilm, and digitally scan three volumes of marriage, birth, and death records for the years nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen forty. My appreciation extended to the city clerk's office for successfully seeking out this grant fund opportunity. A couple of quick informational items. Wright Pierce Engineers has informed us that the final bid documents were completed regarding the Constitutional Complete Streets Project. Staff is finalizing a bid release date this week, with bids due back in early February. The Sports Hub Dome. Staff completed a pre-construction meeting this past Thursday. As you may have seen, the site prep work has started. The developer's timeframe for opening the facility is November first of this year. New John Deere loader. Provided you some copies of the loader, as well as the equipment operator. The city accepted delivery of the new John Deere loader this past week with the plow and wing system that was utilized this past, the other day for the storm. That concludes my report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will bring us to agenda item number thirteen, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule seventeen, appointments, the following are being introduced this evening and placed in nomination. Matt Kaiser for appointment as Ward One Selectman with a term to expire December two thousand twenty-five, as well as Michael Turgeon for appointment as Ward Two Supervisor of the checklist with a term to expire January two thousand twenty-nine. In accordance with council. Yeah, no problem. Sure, can do. Absolutely, yeah. So I'll be looking for a motion to waive rules. I think that's a great point. Councillor Messier? Yep, Councillor Messier makes a motion to waive council rules tonight. Is there a second? Councillor Gibson, seconds? All right, the motion on the table is to waive council rules for, to make a vote on tonight's appointments is, excuse me. All those in favor will state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, sorry, everybody, bear with me. All those opposed will state by saying no. All right, seeing as there are no nos, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the motion is accepted. So these will now go forward for a vote for council tonight, so I'll repeat them. We have Matt Kaiser for appointment as Ward One Selectman with a term to expire December two thousand twenty-five, as well as Michael Turgeon for appointment as Ward Two Supervisor of the checklist with a term to expire January two thousand twenty-nine. What are the wishes of the council? Councillor Messier?
One of Michael Turgeon.
All right, motion on the table is from Councillor Messier to accept the nominations, the slate of nominations. Is there a second? Councillor Gibson, thank you. All right, again, motion on the table is to accept the two nominations tonight. All those in favor, you will state by saying aye?
Question?
Aye.
I have a question on the vote, I apologize, go ahead.
I have December twenty twenty-six, is that correct? Or is it twenty twenty-five?
That is a.
Just wanted to clarify.
Twenty twenty-six is in the minutes, that was a typographical error in my notes, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, great catch. All right, we're gonna repeat the vote so that everybody at home can hear it again. Thank you for the question. Again, if you are in favor of the vote, you will state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Those opposed state by saying no. All right, seeing as there are no nos, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominees are so far appointed. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me on the curve ball. Also, under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule seventeen, appointments, the following are being brought forward this evening for a confirmation vote. First up is David A. Witham for the position of Deputy Mayor. What are the wishes of the council? Yeah, Councillor Parity-Cotton Zero?
I guess I'd like to nominate David Witham for Deputy Acting Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Parity-Cotton Zero moves for the nominee to be confirmed. Is there a second? Second by Councillor Cameron. The question before the council is on the confirmation of David A. Witham for the position of Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, please state by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, say no? We have one no. All right, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominee is so far confirmed. Thank you. All right, next up is Paul Goodwin as the city council's representative to the Historic District Commission. What are the wishes of the council? Yes, Councillor Peppin? All right, Councillor Peppin moves that the nominee be confirmed. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Mishu. Question before the council is on the confirmation of Paul Goodwin as the city council's representative to the Historic District Commission. All those in favor, please state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, say no? Okay, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominee is so far confirmed. Next up is David A. Witham as the city council's representative to the planning board. What are the wishes of the council for this? Yes, Councillor Goodwin?
I'd like to make a motion to put forward that nomination.
Councillor Goodwin moves the nominee be confirmed. Second, seconded by Councillor Peppin. Question before the council is on the confirmation of David A. Witham as the city council's representative to the planning board. All those in favor, please state by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, say no? Okay, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, nominee is confirmed. All right, last up is Kenneth Vincent as the city council's alternate representative to the planning board. What are the wishes of the council for this? Yes, Councillor Gibson?
I move that we accept the nomination of Kenneth Vincent as alternate representative to the planning board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Messier. Question before the council is on the confirmation of Kenneth Vincent as the city council's alternate representative to the planning board. All those in favor, please state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, say no? All right, ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominee is confirmed. All right, thank you, everybody. That moves us to agenda item fourteen, which is items that have been laid upon the table. There are no items there. That then means we can move to agenda item number fifteen, which is unfinished business. We'll start with ordinances. The chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on ordinance seven dash twenty-four, which is to amend chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section Three, Traffic Control, which is regarding time-limited parking on the westerly side of Main Street to Spring Street from two hours to all-day parking. parking, as well as changing parking on Lord's Court from prohibited to seasonal, allowing parking during the warm seasons, and prohibited parking from November 15th to April 15th. Clerk, you are recognized.
Ordinance Number 724, to amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Section 3, Traffic Control.
All right. Ordinance 7-24, having been read a first and now a second time, is open to further amendment. Are there any amendments tonight? All right. Seeing as there are no amendments being offered, the Chair will be looking for a motion. Yes, Counselor Messier?
I'll make a motion that the council accept for approval, Ordinance Number 724.
Counselor Messier moves for the adoption of Ordinance 7-24, seconded by Counselor Cameron. All right. The motion before the council is to adopt Ordinance 7-24. Is there...excuse me, 7-27. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing as there is none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 7-24...no, it is 7-24. Sorry, again, my numbers. You will state by saying yes. If you are not in favor, you will state by saying no. I will call on the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
And Goodwin?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 7-28 has been adopted. No, 7-24. Sorry, keep doing that. This is what you get when you copy and paste, I think. All right. Next on the agenda is Agenda Item 16, which is New Business. We will start with our resolutions. Tonight, the Chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 28-24, which is a proclamation declaring January Diversity Month in the city of Somersworth. Clerk?
Resolution Number 2824, proclamation declaring January Diversity Month in the city of Somersworth, January 8th, 2024. Whereas January 15th, 2024, will mark the 95th birthday of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas the dream of equal treatment is the foundation of human rights and democratic values, and whereas our nation has worked towards the goal of fulfillment of this commitment for over 245 years, and whereas the city of Somersworth has become a model of a community which embraces and promotes its diversity, and whereas the city of Somersworth is committed to the values of equality and liberty stated in the Declaration of Independence, United States Constitution, New Hampshire State Constitution, and City Charter, and whereas the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. reminded us that freedom, liberty, and equality must be protected for all citizens, and that from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire, let freedom ring. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Somersworth encourages all residents, including community groups, schools, and institutions, to continue to work towards fulfilling Dr. King's dream of the elimination of all barriers to the fulfillment of equal opportunities and human rights. And whereas the city of Somersworth calls upon all citizens to reflect during this month on the message of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. and commit themselves throughout the year to join the fight for the elimination of all forms of discrimination and disadvantage, and to ensure that everyone has the right to live in conditions of dignity, respect, and peace. And the Somersworth mayor and city council hereby declare that January 2024 be Diversity and Equality Month in the city of Somersworth, and that the city of Somersworth, along with all its citizens, hereby recommits itself to the fulfillment of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding, Councilors David A. Witham, Nancy Cameron, Crystal Parity Catanzaro, Richard Misho, Paul Goodwin, Dennis Messier, approved city attorney.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Counselor Peppin?
I make a motion to have a second reading on...
Awesome.
28-24.
Thank you. Counselor Peppin makes a motion for a second reading on Resolution 28-24. Is there a second? Counselor Mishu, thank you. The question before the council is on a second reading of Council...excuse me, of Resolution 28-24, which is a suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion passes. The Chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 28-24.
Resolution Number 2824, proclamation declaring January Diversity Month in the city of Somersworth.
Thank you. Resolution 28-24, having been read a first and now a second time, is open to amendments. Are there any amendments? All right. Seeing as there are none, we'll be looking for a motion on Resolution 28-24. Yes, Counselor Parity Catanzaro.
Yes, I would like to move for the adoption of this.
Thank you. Counselor Parity Catanzaro moves for the adoption of Resolution 28-24, seconded by Counselor Mishu. The motion before the council is to adopt Resolution 28-24. Is there a discussion? Counselor Peppin? No? All right. Is there discussion from others tonight? Okay. If you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 28-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 28-24 has been adopted. All right. That will move us on to Resolution 29-24, excuse me. The Chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 29-24, which is to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire State Library and to accept a Moose Plate Grant Award for Vital Records Preservation.
Resolution Number 2924, to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the New Hampshire State Library and to accept a Moose Plate Grant Award for Vital Record Preservation, January 8th, 2024. Whereas the city of Somersworth values its history and understands the importance of preserving and maintaining the city's records, and whereas the city of Somersworth applied for a Moose Plate Grant through the New Hampshire State Library to preserve and protect the city's historical vital records, and whereas the city of Somersworth has received notification of a Moose Plate Grant Award in the amount of $9,249 to conduct preservation treatment, microfilm, and digitally scan three volumes of marriage, birth, and death records for the years 1938 through 1940. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to execute any documents and agreements necessary for the grant's acceptance and execution, and take any and all other such actions relative to this grant's project's completion determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding, Councilors David A. Witham, Nancy Cameron, Crystal Parity Catanzaro, Richard Misho, Paul Goodwin, Dennis Messier, approved city attorney.
All right. Resolution 29-24, having been read a first and second time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gibson?
I wasn't ready a second time.
This was a first reading, as far as I am aware. It's under New Business. Oh, did I say, "having been read a first and second"? No. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Got to have a few flubs in the first meeting, right?
I know what you meant.
Yeah, exactly. Good catch, though. Thank you. All right. That does move us to Agenda Item 17, which is Comments by Visitors. So again, the Somersworth City Council and mayor's office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at the city council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into debate with any person, the mayor, city council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Anyone who would like to speak? All right. Seeing as there are none, we will move on to Agenda Item 18, which is Closing Comments by Council Members. We're gonna start tonight with Counselor Peppin. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of things. The snowstorm, I'd like to thank the Highway Department and all the emergency services that traveled in this stuff all weekend. And I'd also like to thank that windstorm that we had and the rainstorm. I was outpowdered for over 10 hours. It took the power lines down off of about four to six poles. Public Service was out there in that wind and that pouring rain for over 10 hours, putting those poles, putting that back in service. And people that said that then they don't put the bucket trucks up when the wind's blowing. Let me tell you, the wind was blowing and they were out there and there were pouring rain. So I'd like to give a hat off to that. One thing I would like to comment on, though, is I know we've upgraded the traffic lights. Well, I didn't think I...it was done Saturday. I turned off a Wash...Blackwater Road onto High Street, and I came to complete stop because it was...the traffic was backed up all the way down to that street. So I don't know what we can do about it, but it wasn't no improvement on Saturday afternoon, I could tell you that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Counselor Gibson.
I'd like to reiterate Counselor Peppin's comments. First responders, Highway Department, they all did an excellent job through the snowstorm. I wasn't aware of Public Service, but they deserve full credit for being out in that type of situation. I hope everybody's New Year is a good one after last year. I think we need one. The other thing I'd like to say is I hope that going forward, that we can continue to find ways to create full cooperation between all the diverse interests in the city to help the city move forward. I know there's been some friction over the last year from different areas, and I'd like to see that not happen again this year. But one thing I will guarantee going forward is I will be asking hard questions where they're necessary, and I don't really care if people get upset with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Parity Catanzaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank you for forming the Community Outreach and Communications Committee, and thank you for appointing me as Chair, and I wanted to let folks know that I'll be reaching out to the people that you've named on the committee to set up our first meeting. And I do want to let people know it's very easy to reach all of us through the website. My email is just my first name, crystal@summersworthnh.gov. So I very much welcome anyone's ideas on how we can improve communication and community outreach to the city to better let folks know what's going on. I know the mayor has some great ideas. I do, too, and I welcome everyone's input. I also wanted to celebrate the traffic lights down High Street. I know it was pretty trafficky this weekend, but it's been very exciting to hear a few people's experiences of hitting a bunch of green lights in a row. So I know they're not totally tweaked and perfected yet, but hopefully a lot of people out there are noticing that it takes a lot less time to get from exit nine here into the downtown. So that's just very exciting, and happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Mishu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to thank Public Works and this previous storm, keeping the roads nice and clear. Did a nice job. I'd like to welcome Counselor Crystal back to city council, and welcome Counselor Paul. Looking forward to a great two years, so wish everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Counselor Messier.
Yeah. I'll just say one comment about the lights on High Street during 6:30, 6:20 in the morning. They seem better, that I don't have to stop, so. The weekend, it can get backed up for traffic going to the stores, so may have been that. Couple of things with the snowstorm that happened. If we can shovel a hydrant in front of your house, it would be helpful. I don't need to be a weatherman, but they say there's some rain coming with the snow. If you got a culvert drain in front of your house... I'll be checking mine tomorrow, making sure, because we don't need flooding, so. I'd like to thank all the councils that, one for another two-year term, and the two newest members, welcome. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, would like to echo the former counselors on Public Works and all their hard work this weekend, keeping those roads clear. I was reading some derogatory comments about how they went this or that compared to other cities, but we do a great job, so I want a shout-out for that. The dog park is now closed, if anybody did not know that, so be careful if you're out there walking your dogs. It is slippery. I know Fenway almost pulled me down, so please be careful. Thank you for the Youth Advisory Committee. Having been a former class advisor, I know that's where that came from, so I'll be looking to get back into working with students again. I love that. And welcome Paul and Crystal to the council. Looking forward to working with both of you, as Paul, you're on quite a few committees with me, so we'll have fun. And Crystal, we're back on recreation together. And if you haven't got your Ellie the dog patch, if you collect the patches, that one goes to the shelter where the dog came from, if I'm not mistaken, chief? And it's a really cute patch. It's the dog in the red Volkswagen that the gentleman is a dispatcher? Is that what he is?
Yes, that's the little one of us.
Okay. And you can hear the dog barking. So when I went to pick up my patch, and they said it was a red vehicle, I said, "Wait a minute, red or maroon?", because Fenway does the same thing. So I had to joke with them about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you.